Good evening. We're going to call our city council meeting to order. Let the record reflect that council members Alvarez, Cobb, and Mayor Debbie Nash King are not present today. Councilmember Boyd, would you be prepared to do the invocation for us today? Thank you. And then we'll have that followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Adams. Thank you.
Business. We ask for your blessing as we go forward in this effort today. We ask that you continue to bless our citizens and keep us close. In Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me as we honor our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God of all who stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have our approval of our agenda. Do we have a motion or direction?
Yes.
Councilmember Solomon?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Councilmember Adams?
A second.
All in favor? Vote yes. Any opposed? Vote no. Thank you. We do have a four total. Yes for all council members that are present. We're going to first start with our presentations. We've got our Star Award. Today is going to be presented by Councilmember Segarra to Pastor Rodney Gilchrist. So if you could just step down. Thank you. So we want to start by welcoming everybody to our council meeting today and take a moment to express to you what we do here with our Citizens Star Award. This is a moment, an opportunity where we get to honor a local citizen who is not necessarily seeking recognition but has been doing a tremendous work within our community. And we want to be able to show our thanks and our gratitude for all of their hard work and dedication. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Segarra.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. And it is truly an honor that we get to do this. I have the privilege because I served as mayor, so I know a lot of people out there. So when this word comes out, sometimes I have a hard time figuring out just who I'm going to choose. And there's a lot of people out there that definitely deserve that. And I was at my granddaughter's track last week at the high school. And as I was thinking of who to pick, somebody crosses my path. And I said, that's God telling me. I need to pick him. And I say, you made this easy. And the reason is because he's, I've known Pastor Gilchrist for so many years. And besides, you know, being a pastor and all that great stuff he does, he does so much for our community. And so I'm going to read some of this. So, and he's not here today. So we have some representatives here, Jackie Nash and, who was the other one?
Biblical Grace.
Okay, Phil?
Biblical Grace.
Biblical Grace. All right. Well, welcome. So Rodney Gilchrist is, he, as we know, he's a devoted local pastor, community leader, and veteran. He resides here in our city. His family arrived in central Texas in 2006 when he was assigned to Headquarters First Cavalry Division as the Command Paralegal. He served as Senior Enlisted Advisor to the Staff Judge Advocate. And after a military career spanning 24 years, he retired as a Sergeant Major E9 in August of 2010. He's a combat veteran having served during both Gulf War and Operation Iraqi Freedom. As a local pastor, he believes the church should serve as a vital community resource. The multi-purpose facility that I know, and we all know here as Liberty Christian Center, has functioned, and this is kind of why I want to honor him, because it functions as an emergency evacuation shelter for the city, an election precinct, and a warming and cooling center for all of our local residents. So for over eight years, Rodney has led the community outreach initiatives, hosted monthly breakfasts that provided meals and free haircuts to individuals in needs. And his church, Liberty Christian Center, has donated thousands of turkeys, hams, and complete Thanksgiving meals to families during Christmas. And the church even gifted 100 bicycles to local children back in 2022. They also have provided traditional Thanksgiving meals to veterans and housed the VA domiciliary in temple. So under Rodney's compassion, compassionate leadership, the church offers weekend meals to underprivileged children at local elementary schools and sponsors an after-school outreach program. Additionally, that's not enough for him. He serves as overseer of the KRGN, Kingdom Revelation Gospel Network. I've been there a couple of times to do interviews, which is 98.5 FM, a stellar award-nominated gospel radio station dedicated to uplifting and inspiring our community here. So with that, Rodney's unwavering commitment to service, faith, and education to make our community great makes a significant impact on all of us here in our community. So with that, I would like to award him and the church and all of you the award of our Star recipient for this quarter. Thank you. She's like, I asked her, she wanted to say, she's like, no.
As we begin to prepare for our work session, council, keep in mind, we have three minutes, three times each. We're going to discuss our agenda items for the March 18 regular session. No final action is needed until after, until the regular session. Madam Secretary?
MN 25007, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of March 4, 2025. RS 25033, consider a memorandum resolution appointing presiding and alternate judges for the May 3, 2025, general and special elections. And this is my item. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council. The city will conduct general and special elections on Saturday, May 3, 2025. The Texas Election Code, Chapter 32, Sections 32.001 and 32.005, requires that a presiding election judge and an alternate presiding judge shall be appointed for each precinct in which an election is held by the governing body of a political subdivision. The City Secretaries Division has identified qualified and experienced individuals to work as election officials for the upcoming election.
Please remember to silence your cell phones. Thank you.
Thank you. The City Secretary serves as the early voting clerk for the city and has the oversight to appoint deputy early voting clerks who essentially have the same duties and responsibilities as a presiding or alternate judge during election day, which is to maintain the peace and security of polling places and processes. And those individuals before you are the lead deputy early voting clerks at those three early voting locations. A presiding judge oversees each precinct polling place on election day. The presiding judge is assisted by at least two election clerks, one of whom serves as the alternate presiding judge. The alternate judge serves as presiding judge when the presiding judge is not available. In addition to processing voters, the presiding judge is responsible for maintaining the security of the polling place. There will be a total of four election workers at each polling location. Before you is the list of election day presiding and alternate judges based on the polling location they will oversee on May 3. And the list is continued. There are eight total polling locations on election day. And this is the last slide that has the election day presiding and alternate judges shown. In every city election, the early voting, the early voting ballots and provisional ballots are counted or processed for counting by an early voting ballot board. The early voting ballot board consists of a presiding judge, an alternate presiding judge, and at least one other member. The general eligibility requirement for a member of the early voting ballot board is the same for a precinct election judge, except that a member of the early voting ballot board is required only to be a resident of the city instead of a resident of any particular election precinct. In a city that uses an electronic voting system, the ballots are counted at one or more central counting stations. The central counting station also includes a presiding and alternate presiding judge for each central counting station. In sum, the presiding and alternate judge before you serves in a double capacity on the early voting ballot board and the central counting station. The presiding election judges, alternate presiding judges, and clerks shall be paid $20 per hour for serving in such capacities. And the election judges and/or alternate judges shall be paid an additional $25 for delivering the returns of such election to the City Secretary for proper tabulation on election night. The early voting ballot board central counting station judge is entitled to be paid a minimum of five hours or $100, plus any additional hours worked at the rate of $20 per hour. The early voting ballot board central counting station alternate judge and clerk are entitled to be paid for a minimum of three hours or $60, plus any additional hours worked at the rate of 20 per hour. The total estimated cost to pay workers to operate three polling locations during early voting and eight polling locations on election day is $35,563, which includes seasonal pay, Medicare, Social Security, and workers' compensation. Colleen Independent School District and Central Texas College will reimburse the city for their share of the cost. And staff recommends city council appoint presiding and alternate judges for the May 3, 2025, general and special elections. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Madam Secretary seeing none, we can move to our next item.
Thank you. RS 25034, consider a memorandum resolution awarding a contract with LD Purchasing Cooperative for the Hangar Roof Rehabilitation Project at Skylark Field in the amount of $98,150.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, city manager, council, and citizens of Colleen. I'm before you is the Hangar Roof Rehabilitation at Skylark Field. The city of Colleen owns and maintains various hangars at Skylark Field Airport. These hangars are leased and occupied by tenants and that generate revenue for the airport. Over the last few years, the hangar roof at 2601 Stone Tree Drive has developed numerous issues and despite frequent repairs by staff, has continued to deteriorate. City staff can no longer effectively repair the roof and it has become a safety hazard for the tenants and their aircraft. The roof is approximately 35 years old and this project will require a full rehabilitation. Staff received quotes from three businesses that participate in the city's approved cooperative purchasing programs. And after review of the quotes, staff recommends LD Tebbin Pack Services Company as the preferred choice because of they are the lowest cost and offer the best value. This project qualifies for the Tech stocks routine airport maintenance program, RAMP, and will receive a 90% reimbursement of the total cost. And staff recommends the city council approve the contract with LD Tebbin Pack Services Company through TIPS National Purchasing Cooperative Contract in the amount of $98,150 and recommends that the city council authorize the city manager or designate to execute all contract documents and any and all change orders or actions within the amount set by state and local law. Pending any questions?
Mr. Provost, thank you for your presentation. We do have Councilmember Adams, please.
Just got one. After the roof, are we going to inspect to make sure no other part of the structure is going to be an issue?
Yes, sir. Our staff continuously performs routine inspections of all facilities at the airport, to include hangars, the ramp, the runway. So we identify those issues ahead of time.
Okay. My concern is that we start on the roof and then the other, the four walls end up becoming an issue.
That particular hangar is one of our oldest ones and it's grandfathered in. So there's not too much we can do with those facilities just because it's so close to the runway. But the roof is required of repair for that since it's 35 years old.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That was our last question, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Secretary?
RS 25035, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the renewal of City Works licensing with Azteca Systems LLC.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council. The item before you tonight is the renewal of the City Works Azteca License Agreement. The City Works Asset Management System is the city's current work order system, which has been in place and used by public works since 2007. City Works utilizes the GIS databases for the main chain managing inventory and the geographically distributed assets. The GIS asset tract includes roadways, bridges, traffic control, parks, park amenities, facilities, trees, surface water systems, water and wastewater systems. And it allows for unlimited use of the software. Using a test system works, Asset Works benefits, offers several benefits for the city. It improves asset tracking, enhance citizen services, or improve management of the city assets can lead to better service delivery for residents and timely road repairs, waste management, and public facilities. Upkeep and cost efficiency by optimizing the asset management process can reduce operational costs and improve resource allocation, leading to better financial management. The continued use of the software requires the city to annually purchase certain licenses. The cost of a one-year license is $77,175 and allows for unlimited number of users. The staff recommends that the city council approves the purchase, the renewal of a one-year contract with Azteca City Works License in the amount of $77,175 and authorize the city manager or designate be expressly authorized to execute any and all change orders set within amounts set by state and local law. And I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Mr. Resto, council members do not, but I do have one question for you at this time. So I see that we did a one-year renewal on this. Is it, do you get, in this situation with software like this, do you get a better deal with a longer-term renewal? Or is this standard practice, you do one at a time?
For this particular software, this is the last year that we'll do this. After that, we'll have to go into a different pricing module, which will be a three-year or five-year license. So next year, when we come in, we're negotiating, that we started negotiating at this year and determined from a budget standpoint, this is what we budgeted for. So they were basically giving us this last one year. Next year, we'll go into negotiations with them and look at other asset management software as well to decide if this is the best route for us. But they're increasing to the tune of about $110,000, $120,000 a year. So we're actually starting that process now.
Okay. Thank you very much. There's no additional questions, sir. We appreciate you. Madam Secretary?
RS 25036, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the rejection of all bids received for bid number 2516, multi-pump replacement for two pump stations and 12 lift stations.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. The water sewer, that infrastructure is vast and it takes a lot of different parts to make that system work. We have about 15 pump stations, but six lift stations throughout the city. That pretty much pushes those, the water and wastewater throughout our, our infrastructure. We went out for bids for these pumps. We got several pumps that need replacing in our pump station and lift stations. We went out for bid, the actual life cycle of those is about 10 to 20 years. And made of many parts that are critical to our infrastructure. Staff went out for a multi-year bid for the pumps, trying to get the best value for, for the city. Make sure we're spending those tax dollars the way they need to be. And on February the 6th of this year, person received one response into, one bid in response to bid number 2516, multi-pump replacements. And review of that one response, it showed that specifications of the bid packet did not meet the specification that we set out for bid for. So we had to, we were here tonight to reject that bid because it did not meet those specifications. General instructions and preparations of the bid conditions within the bid documents allows the city to reject any and all bids that does not meet those specifications. This is a picture of what the pumps look like. This is a recently replaced pump here. This keeps the water moving in our system and it pumps it from one location to the other. So that's what you see here. If you see the little red covering on the backside of that pump, that's, we're going to be talking about motors on our next presentation. The backside of that red, red device, you got the motor that feeds the pump, that drives that pump for us, just for clarification. Today, we ask the city council to reject all responses to bid number 2516, multi-pump replacements for pump stations and lift stations and that the city go out to bid later, at a later date, or utilize the cooperative process to acquire these pumps for our pump and lift stations. And with that being said, I'm available for any questions.
And we have none at this time, sir. Thank you for your presentation. Madam Secretary?
RS 25037, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the rejection of all bids received for bid number 2519, motor replacement for four pump stations.
Same thing with the motors. We have a four pump station that requires new motors. We went out for bid for those. They have pretty much the same life cycle, a 10 to 20-year lifespan. We have several that has met that exceeded that life cycle. So we want to replace those, those motors. We went out for bid. Same thing here. We, and I think it's because people are not willing to do a multi-year bid on items like this because prices are going up and down. So it'd be kind of hard to get that bid on that. On February the 5th, person received one response for bid number 2519, motor replacements. And review of the responses showed that the specifications once again did not meet the, as quoted in the packet. This is from the same company that did, that put the quote for the, submitted a bid for the pumps as well. And as I said before, our instructions and preparation of the bid allows us to reject those bids. This is the motor that's attached to the pump that we just talked about, that adjusts the driving force for that pump. City council, we ask that you reject all responses to bid number 2519, pump, motor replacements for pump stations and that the city go out for bid at a later date or utilize the cooperative to acquire these items. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Looks like we do have one from Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Reynolds, first question, is in the cooperative process, are we more likely to get a multi-year bid?
No, in the cooperative process, we were not. We're not going to be getting the bids through a co-op. We're going to go out and actually buy as needed for these, for these specific, these specific items. We did look at several co-ops today that offer these things over the last couple of days. So we have found some decent pricing out there to acquire the pumps that we need for those locations.
Okay. And then what we have now, how long will they last? It's not, do we have emergency backup just in case?
No, we have, and most, most pump and lift stations are going to have multiple pumps and lift stations. So when one go down, we can actually function off of the other two or the other one that's in there. So we just want to, we want to get ahead of that curve. Our job is to look down and roll around the corner, make sure we don't run into a situation where we lose two pumps and now we don't have the capability of pushing that, the wastewater or the water through the system.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary?
RS 25038, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a Second Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Central Texas Alcohol Rehabilitation Center, increasing the amount for substance use disorder counseling and treatment services in the amount of $57,734.
Welcome, Ms. McNair.
Thank you. Good afternoon. On December 12, 2023, Colleen City Council approved the Professional Services Agreement with Central Texas Alcohol Rehabilitation Center, also known as Syntex ARC, in the amount of $143,130 for substance use disorder treatment, counseling, and comprehensive wraparound services. This program responds to recommendations outlined in the Homeless and Mental Health Strategic Plan for Intensive Mental Health and Substance Use Disorder Treatment. And this program is instrumental in assisting individuals to exit homelessness in Colleen. The original agreement funded up to two scholarships for up to 180 days. Since the program's inception, program funding has assisted a total of 10 participants, nine males, one veteran, and one female. The maximum scholarship amount per person is $35,100 and that's just taking the 180 days, multiplying it by $195. The city of Colleen is a recipient of funds from the State of Texas Opioid Abatement Settlement and may utilize funds to address SUDS assistance and intervention for its homeless initiative. Funds are dispersed periodically with the amount determined by the state. The city has received additional settlement funds in the amount of $57,734. Our First Amendment was administrative in nature. We just clarified with our service provider, the maximum number of days per participant and representatives with the authority to coordinate services. No monetary or substantive changes to the original agreement were made. The Second Amendment that's before you now will increase the amount available adding $57,734 for a total agreement amount of $200,864. All remaining terms of the agreement shall remain in effect. Staff recommends that city council authorize the city manager or his designate to execute the Second Amendment for professional services with Syntex ARC. And additionally, we have representatives from our Colleen Community Engagement Unit who refers clients to the center and also from Syntex ARC if there are questions about the services they provide.
Thank you, madam. It looks like we do have one question from Mr. Councilmember Adams.
Me again, I'm sorry. I did, just, so a lot of times when money is spent, we look for impact. Do we follow up on any of the participants to see, to make sure they're not back on the streets? And they've gone to the next level where we hope they could be? If that's the right term?
Yes, sir, we do. We stay in touch with Syntec ARC on a regular basis. Of those 11 people, all of them are housed and still currently housed. As a matter of fact, I just went up there last week. I was approached by this one that's awaiting housing. He is currently working a full-time job out at the HEB. I was very proud to buy his second car for him and his wife.
Okay.
So the program does work and we do follow up and keep in touch with all the people that we recommend over there.
Oh, thanks. That's outstanding.
Thank you. Thank you. There's no additional questions. Madam Secretary?
PH 25010. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Central Texas Land Development Services on behalf of Gary W. Persher Jr. and John Helen Persher, 1999 Trust, case number Z 2502, to rezone approximately 10.36 acres, being part of Lot 13 and all of Lot 14 of the Southwest Crossing Edition, from R1, single-family residential district, to R2, two-family residential district. The subject property is generally located northwest of the intersection of Wells Fargo Drive and Turkey Trot Road, Colleen, Texas.
Welcome, Ms. Messer.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Council. This item is a request to rezone approximately 10.36 acres, generally located on the northwest corner of Wells Fargo Drive and Turkey Trot Road. If approved, the applicant intends to develop the property into approximately 22 duplex lots. The red star on your screen indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the site showing the area of the proposed rezone. This is a view of the subject property facing northwest from the intersection of Wells Fargo Drive and Turkey Trot Road. This is a view from the subject property facing south. This is a view of the adjacent property to the east across Turkey Trot Road. This is a view of the adjacent property to the east, and a view from the subject property facing southwest along Wells Fargo Drive. Subject property is located in the control growth sector on the growth sector map and designated residential mix on the future land use map. And staff does find that the applicant's request for R2 is consistent with the recommendations of the Colleen 2040 Comprehensive Plan. However, staff finds that the request is not consistent with the predominantly rural character of the surrounding area. We notified 19 surrounding property owners regarding this request, and to date, we've received one written response and support. This is the notification boundary for this request. So staff finds that the applicant's request is not consistent with the rural character, as I said, and staff finds that the proposed use is not compatible with the large lot and estate lot, single-family development in the immediate vicinity. However, we are of the determination that duplexes would be appropriate in the area along Tremere Road where the character is more urban. With that, staff is recommending disapproval of the applicant's request to rezone the property from R1 to R2. At the regular meeting on February 10th, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of four to two, with Commissioners Plakman and Wilson voting in opposition to the motion. The Commissioners in opposition stated that they supported staff's recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Messer. Councilmember Adams?
I was looking, can you explain why the staff recommendation for rural despite what the 2040 says?
So the comprehensive plan, the place type on the future land use map is for residential mix, which allows a wide range of residential and non-residential uses. So it allows everything from large lot residential up to duplexes and commercial uses. So there's a lot that's allowed in the residential mix place type. So that's the first thing that we look at when determining what, what recommendation to make. The other thing that we look at is the character of the area where the request is. So we take both of those factors into account. We don't purely look at the area, and we don't purely look at the future land use map. We look at both in combination with each other. So in this case, as I said, there's a lot that's allowed in residential mix, including duplexes. But we also looked at the character of the area, which in this, in this location is predominantly large lot, single-family. So that was how we, how we formulated our recommendation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Segarra?
I was just going to clarify, I think you mentioned it, but this is the same area that maybe a couple of months ago, we approved R1? Is it?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, you're, yes, the, the area of this request, that's correct. The applicant requested to rezone this particular property and their property that he owns around it to R1.
R1.
And there was a discussion at that point about duplexes, and this is the subsequent request to rezone that property again from R1 to R2.
Yeah, because I remember, and I think it was made mention that, you know, when we did the R1, and it was indicated they wanted R2s, and I said, well, why didn't you R2s? They said, because the staff said not to bring it. Now, I think they were encouraged by the council to say, come back and bring us R2. But it, the rural character, that's, that's, if you can, I know Councilmember Adams said something, but if you can explain it, if they're going to put like, if they're already approved for R1, which is housing, doesn't that take away from the rural character right there? If you put houses on there and then?
I think, I think that there are two different questions here. One is about character, and the other is about land use, right? So to answer your question, yes, the R1 zoning for this, if it's developed, would, would create a suburban character, single-family development. Whether or not you think the density of duplexes is appropriate here, I think is, is a question for the council to consider.
Yeah. Do we know how many duplexes are going to be here?
Roughly 22.
22. Are they going to be, are going to be sold, or do we know that?
That's a question for the applicant.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. My question is, are there any two-family, existing two-family in close proximity to the proposed area?
Yes. There are, I'm not finding them on this map, but there are a few existing duplexes on the opposite side of Tremere. I think they're further north on Tremere than what's shown on this map, but there are some not terribly far away.
Yeah, it looks like the prevailing use has been single-family up until this point. And so I was just curious where we had the existing two-family. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We do not have any additional questions, Ms. Messer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kegel, yes?
Just one comment to try to answer Councilmember Segarra's question a little more. Part of it, the reason R1 was acceptable, it's, it's part of a transition where you're going from the, the large lot, then to smaller lot, then across the street even smaller in some areas or some duplexes. And it's just about the transition. It's a, it's a bigger, it's a very big change going from the large lot to the duplex, and I think that was the part of their rationale.
Thank you for that, sir. Madam Secretary?
We are now at the citizen comments portion of the agenda.
Okay, citizens, keep in mind, we have four minutes with a one-minute time allotted for City Council to respond with a statement or explanation without engaging in dialogue. We're going to start our citizens' comments section with Melissa Brown.
Good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to tell you that I fully support the Syntex ARC program. I think that this is an invaluable resource to our community, one that besides just putting in this extra money right now, should be looked into in the future for investing even more into. Two beds at a time for the year is not a whole lot when you look at the need that we have. There are other programs, there are other locations. If Syntex ARC isn't able to handle all of the needs that we have, where we may be able to work with them also. I am curious, though, because Program Homeless Initiative Fund is not listed in the published adopted budget, and why not? What is the balance of that fund? If we're going to be taking money out of it, just to say that it's sufficient money, we don't know if it's going to leave us a balance we could potentially use for other things. But why are we hiding money from the citizens? Why is this not a fund that's available for the public to see? Why is this not published in the council's budget? Because you have the same budget that we have. What was amendment one exactly? How long did we change the maximum stay for? Why wasn't it brought up, at least for conversation to say, hey, guess what, council? This is something that I did. So $200,000 for that, sounds like a lot of money. That's a drop in the bucket when it comes to rehab, especially when you're doing in-house, onsite rehab where they're taking care of them, and then following up with them in the future. Speaking of the future, what is the plan for moving forward when the opioid settlement is expended? Who's on the decision-making committee for that, and who gets to go there? Because this isn't something we can just stop. This isn't something we're going to be able to just use all of our CDBG funds to fund. We're going to have to come up with a plan for this to continue it in the future. Our city manager indicated we're facing a deficit. We will have a balanced budget. We'll just essentially move money out of the fund balance, or in normal words, we will transfer money from the savings to the checking account deficit spending, like I said. Even if we use the mid-year budget amendment for part of deficit, keep in mind, part of that is planned to be used in FY '25, reducing the amount going into that savings, and getting close to not having money to transfer over to CIPs anymore. Our city manager should have been able to forecast this and recommend more responsible spending. See, include removing salary budgets in positions vacant over a year in his department, less spending on new parks, looking at our change orders instead of having it approved by department heads. How much have we expended in change orders throughout the city? I'd love to know, but the city wants almost $800 from me in order to get that information. Information that in prior years, I have been able to get for free. All of a sudden, this year, I'm being charged exorbitant amounts of money to get what should be public information. Anything having to do with finance, we shouldn't be charged for that. We deserve to know where our money is going. The council has the ability to say, you know what, going forward in the future, if it's financially related, we're not going to charge the citizens for it. That is our right as citizens. That is our right as the people who live here, work here, buy here, pay taxes here, raise our children here. Why is that being hidden from us, or why am I being forced to pay such a large bill to get it? The city manager could control that. He could say, you know what, we're not going to do that. He has the authority to do pretty much everything else. Why not that? He's making changes to contracts without telling y'all about it, without telling the public about it. Don't look at me like that. It says in the presentation, the change order or the change, the contract was made, without bringing it to anyone. Financial or not, you're making the changes without telling us. Where's the transparency from the city manager?
Thank you. Michael Fernino?
Could you come back to me to give us the rest of it?
Michael Fernino. Sean Price?
Good evening, Protem, City Council. I just have basic questions, and if we can refrain from rephrasing my question and just actually answering the question, I'd be greatly appreciative of it. But that's usually the Ms. Nash that does that. So under RS 25034, I'm just wondering, of that 10, of the, of the 10% that's left, right, are we covering that cost? And then there, and is this a loan to the airport that we're going to cover that 10% and they pay it back out of their resources, like they would, you know, because they support themselves? We don't, you know, we don't give them tax dollars to keep the airport open for the Uber rich that fly in there on their G5s, right? On RS 25035, how many people were this license covered? Right? For $77,000, how many users are we actually paying for? So what's the end cost per user? RS 25036 and 37, under that process of cooperative, can that be explained, right, what that process actually is, what cooperative means? Because it means certain things to certain people, and it has different definitions across different city governments. So I'm just wondering what our city government ascertains as the meaning for cooperative. RS 25038, this is a great program. I'm full support of it, but I'm just wondering, who makes the decision of who gets in, right, and what that process is? And how mu, how many people will the $57,000 actually help? Is it just one person? Because if I look at the numbers, you know, it's only like a, it's a handful of people that are helped for $200,000. So I'm just, I'm, you know, 10 to 14 people. I'm like, okay, that's a lot of money for 10 to 14 people. I get it. It, you know, it's $200 a day, right? That's, that's insignificant in a lot of cases, right? It's just double the cost of a hotel room in Colleen. So I'm just like, okay. But you're getting a lot of other services. So it's, it's something that the city needs, because I see them on my street all day, walking up and down, stoned, drunk, falling around, falling off their bicycles, things like this. You know, I've got the, the couples arguing on the street and fighting and so forth. So I get to see it every day, and it's, it's nice to see a program in a city that actually takes effort to get these guys off the street, you know, and give them a chance to take part in civil life again. So I'm just wondering, who makes the decision of who gets in? That's, that's all. And then on the, well, we're not doing the public hearing yet, right? Okay. So that's my view right there. Thank you.
We've got them documented. Thank you, sir.
That concludes our citizens' comments portion. So with that, there were a couple of questions that were asked by the, the citizens, and I think that if Ms. McNair is, she's still with us, I'd like to start with you and just kind of go down the list there. I don't know if you took note of the list, but it seems like we have some support based on the comments that were received today. The first question that was asked us about the homelessness initiative, the balance before and after, and how does that get published? Do we have that information?
So the settlement amount for the city of Colleen was $535,650. Of that, we have received, and I just went back historically, approximately $290,000, which leaves about $245,000 left on that settlement. Finance did create a separate fund to account for these dollars. With our switch over, I, I'm still memorizing our different funds, but so I couldn't tell you that here right now. But this was established back in 20, at least 2023, and I only can say that because I arrived to the city at 2023. But there is a separate fund that records the deposits and debits from this opioid settlement. The question about the First Amendment, there was not a change in the number of days. It was the language regarding the number of days that was confusing for our service provider so that we could accurately charge or receive our charge for the assistance that they were providing. There was any, no change, no change there. And we consulted with, we, our Department Community Development, we worked with the Deputy City Attorney on any document that we prepare, and with her consultation, it was determined that we did not need to come before council for just substantive changes that clarified language within the document. We didn't change the term. We didn't change the amount per day. We didn't change the amount of the entirety of the agreement. So that was that. And then I would like to call up Sergeant Moore, who talks about, who can talk about his referral process.
Wonderful.
For the program.
Outstanding. Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant Moore.
How are you guys doing? Just to touch on your question, great question, by the way, as far as who determines who can go to the rehab facility. Let me just start out by saying it is voluntary. So we can't, we do, we all see a lot of the individuals that could probably benefit from the program. However, it's a voluntary process, so we can't force anybody to do it. But as far as our referral process, it'll, let's just say you were a citizen and you came in contact with somebody, you would just contact the Community Engagement Unit and our Homes Outreach guys within, and/or our social worker, our LMSW, and we'll go out and make contact with them. We'll start a packet as far as detailing what situation they're in, and are they a good candidate, meaning are they ready for change, starting number one. And then we start the process, making sure we have beds available with our partners at the ARC, and then go from there. It's a relatively simple process. It's just, like I said, we, we wouldn't be as successful as we have been as a city and as a, a unit if we didn't have the partnerships that we had with the ARC.
And those partnerships are extremely important and essential.
Yes.
So the, the second part of his question that was also about, do we know about So the second part of his question that was also about, do we know about how many people would be helped if the funds were utilized?
Just doing quick math, we have $57,000. It's about $35,000 if they stay the full 180 days. So I know this sounds weird, but 1.5 people can be assisted. Like I said, I know it sounds weird, but some people don't stay the entire six months. So we could, at minimum, get someone in and then assist someone for maybe up to three months, three to four months.
And we have done that before. So if they finish the program or if they, then we can utilize that continues in those days for another person. And hopefully, they have similar success.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Kegel, we had a few additional questions. Maybe you can cover for us. Thank you.
Once again, the 26 budget hasn't even been submitted. That was a forecast. And the allegation that we're simply going to balance the budget with fund balance is completely false. We don't do that, haven't done that. The other allegation, as opposed to some unfunded position in the city manager's office, that's just false. So I don't know what that's about. And, oh, change orders and public information requests. Those prices are set by the state of Texas. We charge what the state of Texas charges allows us to charge. And we don't have any separate exorbitant fees for anyone else. We go by the state regulations.
Mr. Kegel, thank you. And then also, the question that was asked was to explain what a cooperative is. I know that Mr. Reynolds can do it, or can you do it?
Sure. I can do it. No, I don't think there are different definitions for cooperatives. So there are a number of cooperatives. So they will take bids and invite different local governments to participate. So they will take bids on behalf of X number of members in the cooperative. So the sealed bid process is already taken into account. It's done at one time. You get bigger volume. And the theory is, by the bigger volume, you get better pricing. Sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. That's why sometimes we do our own bids, and sometimes we go with a cooperative. If you think the market is really changing quickly, one way or another, that can impact your decision on whether to go with a cooperative or not. But generally, it's a good deal, because a lot of the work's already done for us. And generally, you get better prices for larger volume.
Thank you for that. Also, the question was posed, and if you just correct me if I'm, if I make a mistake here, but he asked a question about RS 25-035, and it was how many licenses? And according to Mr. Resto's presentation, he said that there were unlimited users. I just want to confirm that?
It's correct. It's unlimited users. And I don't have the answer off the top of my head, how many users we have with that particular software.
And then if for some reason I missed that, Mr. Price, if you would just get with me after the meeting or on the next break, and then I'll get some clarity for you there. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Adams.
There was also a question about the 10%. Who covers the other 10% on, I'm sorry, Mr. Resto?
We'll start with Mr. Resto and then cover the 10% for the airport. Thank you.
Currently, we have 52 users.
Currently, there's 52 users?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Resto. Mr. Provost.
The airport covers the 10%. So $1,800 will come out of our operational fund to cover the $100,000 project.
And just to follow up on that, that's money generated through the airport. That's not tax dollars.
Outstanding. So that looks like that covers our questions that were asked by our citizens during the citizen comments section. We are ready to move on to our regular session. I just need to confirm that we are good to go. Do we need to take a break at this point?
Yeah.
Waiting for Fernando. Keep going. Outstanding. We're going to move on to our regular session, which is, gives us three minutes, three times each. We're going to start with our consent agenda. Madam Secretary.
MN 25-007, RS 25-033, RS 25-034, RS 25-035, RS 25-036, RS 25-037, and RS 25-038.
We need a motion, a second and a vote to consider the consent agenda. Councilmember Segaro.
So moved.
Councilmember Adams.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Segaro, second by Councilmember Adams. All in favor, vote yes. Any opposed, vote no. We have all in favor. Thank you.
Public hearings. PH 25-010. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Central Texas Land Development Services on behalf of Gary W. Perser Jr. and John Helen Perser, 1999 Trust, case number Z 25-02, to rezone approximately 10.36 acres, being part of Lot 13 and all of Lot 14 of the Southwest Crossing addition, from R1, single-family residential district, to R2, two-family residential district. The subject property is generally located on the, at the intersection of Wells Fargo Drive and Turkey Trot Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the city of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 10.36 acres, being part of Lot 13 and all of Lot 14 of the Southwest Crossing addition, from R1, single-family residential district, to R2, two-family residential district, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you.
Yes. Before we get started, Mayor Protem, can you explain to me why I put in for citizens' comments, where I could speak about this, where I'd get my another four minutes, but I didn't get to speak? So I don't know what I did wrong or what I didn't do.
They had you listed for public hearings, so we didn't know if you were going to speak after that. Hold on one second, sir.
Yeah, I think we had that discussion some time ago. Sign up for public hearings is for public hearings and citizen comments is for the other, so you don't sign up for both.
I'm still confused, Mr. City Manager, because I hear other people talk about the considered agenda items. So evidently, I don't know how to fill it out, or I'm doing something wrong.
That's okay. Give us just one moment, Mr. Perser. Thank you. Sir, Mr. Perser, it looks like they've got you listed for public hearings, so you are able to speak at the end of your presentation. You have four minutes after the citizens speak at the public hearing, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening, council. I would like for y'all to, I gave y'all a handout right here. I'd like y'all to flip over to the second page. Forget about this one for just a minute, and we'll flip to the second page. If you look on the second page, it's your future land use map. And I think all of y'all have sat on the dice long enough to understand the future land use map. And in the future land use map, I have circled in pink the property. And if I look over at your legend, it says residential mix. Okay? So now I've got to go a little bit farther into y'all's ordinances, y'all's criteria. So we'll flip the page to the second, the little short one right here, the residential mix. So if we flip the page to that, you look under residential mix, and down at the bottom, I circled that where everybody could follow it real quick. It says primary uses, not secondary uses, not third-tier uses. It says primary uses. And what I'm asking for meets all y'all's criteria, every bit of it. And I meet your 2040 comprehensive plan. Yet I get staff that comes up here and recommends disapproval. That is blatant, blatant against everything that y'all say. And for me, it's a name. It's my name. I do take it personally. When I meet everything y'all have asked me to meet, and they can come up here before y'all, and they can say that whatever reason they want to, when I meet your criteria, how can you, how can they even, why would they do that? That's craziness. I meet everything y'all tell me. Now, I want you to look at this right here. It's the same thing you're looking at on the front page. You can go to the front page. If you look right here, this is my project right here. This is adjoining land, my neighbor. I've got, this is the property that they're talking about. And on your first sheet, you will see it, I highlighted in pink for you on the very bottom, they started this project in 1975, 50 years ago. It was a county subdivision. It was a rural county subdivision. And the reason they went out there, because they didn't have to follow city standards. They didn't have curb and gutter. They didn't have sewer. They didn't have asphalt. They didn't have drainage. They had nothing, and they could develop out there cheaper. So 50 years later, here we are. Well, we've grown into it, right? I mean, we've grown 50 years. We're there now. And their last project was in 1989. It took them 14 years to get through this. I don't want none of that. I don't look for 14 years. If you look over here, right here on y'all's little sheet, I have 104 foot that adjoins them. It doesn't join them, it's across the road. 104 foot. You look at this piece of property right here, I marked it for you, 1,500 foot, 1,500 foot. Guess what the city staff recommends for this property right here? They recommend approval. But yet, they recommend denial for me. They've got 15 times more adjacent property than I've got. That is blatant frustration. That is wrong, and it's up to the city manager, or it's up to the department head, whoever that is, to correct that. And if the department head don't correct it, it's up to that man sitting right there, the city manager, to correct it. And if it ain't up to him to correct it, then he puts it on the seven of y'all. Y'all have to correct it. This is blatant wrong, and it's very frustrating. So you can, the staff can go to turn me down, but they can go to approve the other property. That's bizarre. And it is frustrating when I meet all y'all's criteria. It's wrong. I know it's wrong. That man there knows it's wrong. And that lady out there knows it's wrong. And somebody's got to stop it. And if they don't stop it, it's up to the seven council members to stop it. I stay here all day. That's not what I need. That's not what y'all need. Mr. Segaro had a good point. It's like, what's the difference? We just doned it R1, so we don't follow the character no more. I did this, and you got a good memory, because I knew it would be a fight. And that takes months and months to fight. So we do it R1. Your city manager just told y'all something that's wrong. It's just wrong. He said it was a transition from big lots to smaller lots. If you will look, Mr. City Manager, these lots are bigger than the R1 y'all approved. You just told the council that these are the transition because of the big lots, and you wanted big lots to transition before the R1. Look at my plaque. These lots are bigger, so it has nothing to do with the lots. Nothing. You know that, and I know that. It has to do with a lot of other things. I know what it has to do with. You know what it has to do with, and so does that lady out there. They don't know, but I know. And it's frustrating. And it is your job, if your staff or your department does not follow your rules, it is your job to correct that. And if you're not going to correct it, then it comes to seven council members to correct it. And it needs correcting, because it's blatant wrong. And I'll answer any questions y'all have.
Thank you, Mr. Perser. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you. Thank you. Two questions. First question is for the city manager. Is this development going to be required to install the fencing? We had a fencing ordinance that we discussed prior to for fences facing the certain streets.
It's not backing up to an arterial.
So it would be whatever standard fencing is placed by the developer.
I think that's flawless, for sure, but I'm pretty sure that's correct.
The enhanced fencing requirement only applies to properties that abut a collector and arterial, and in this case, this side of the property does not. The overall plan that Mr. Perser had, the R1 portion of that overall concept plan will, along Tremere, have to provide the enhanced fencing. But the R2 request itself does not.
I see. Thank you. The next question is for the applicant, actually. Is this the proposed site plan or layout for the duplexes?
Tell me again, I didn't understand.
Is what we're looking at here the proposed layout for the lots?
Yes, sir.
Okay. To include the green space.
I've got like 12 acres, 11, 10, 11, 12 acres of green space.
Sure. And I see there's entrances. Wow, along, I guess, Turkey Trot here. There's three separate entrances going in here. The layout is different from what I assumed it might be. I actually think this is an interesting layout. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Councilmember Boyd asked one of my questions, but the other is, is there, this may not be for Mr. Perser, but is there a traffic infrastructure assessment required for this? Or is it below the threshold?
It's below the threshold.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Segaro.
I just, I just want to clarify. Councilmember Boyd mentioned if this the layout, but in looking at the layout, you know, the question I had asked earlier is how many duplexes are going to be here? What was, what was the answer to the number of duplexes?
Approximately 22.
Yeah. And looking, and looking at this plot map, the way it's designed, there's a lot more than 22 here.
What you're looking at is the concept plan for the overall area that's owned by Mr. Perser. So the area of the zoning request tonight is just the corner, on the corner of Turkey Trot and Wells Fargo for 22 duplexes. The remaining lots that you're looking at are for R1.
So the corner would be, as we're looking at it, right there. And can Mr. Perser ask that last question, that one question I asked? Are these going to be duplexes for you to sell, or are these going to be duplexes for you to keep?
That's, it's hard to answer that truthfully. I've got 74, and I've never sold one of them. But I don't want to stand here and tell you, the intention is to keep them, okay? But if I tell you I'm going to keep them, and five, 10 years from now, sell them, I don't want that burden. So I've never sold a duplex. I've been building them for 20 years, and I don't intend to sell these. But things do change. And these, the reason the duplexes are over there is because I didn't want to mix them with the R1, because people don't like that too much. So it's just a pocket, a pocket park of duplexes. And it just happened, it could have been 12, or just what the layout, the amount of the land that was there. And that's all. And, you know, I meet your primary uses, and it's amazing to me that we even have this discussion. And it's amazing that they will support the adjoining property which has townhouses. And it's amazing that they will support the adjoining property which has townhouses at a higher density. It's just bizarre.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Messer, Councilmember Segaro, does that conclude your line of questions?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Messer, just to follow up on the statement that the gentleman made regarding the 15 times more adjacent property, what would we say, I mean, outside of that, his statement about there being a difference in our approval versus the almost 1,500 feet down below the change of the area? What is your feedback for us on that?
Yes, ma'am. So there's a current request for, to rezone the property that's on the opposite side of Wells Fargo. That request is before the Planning and Zoning Commission right now, they've, at their last meeting, they heard the request, and held the public hearing, and tabled the item pending the decision tonight. But the request for that area is for predominantly R1, which is single-family zoning. And then there's a section of RT1 townhomes, proposed adjacent to the existing B3 commercial property that's on that corner. And so the applicant's request in that case is for, again, predominantly R1 zoning with a buffer of townhomes, not duplexes, but RT1 townhomes, intended as a buffer between the R1 request and the existing commercial. So that's, I think, a distinction between that request and this request, is that the other request that Mr. Purser is referring to abuts existing B3 zoning.
Understood, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Looks like we have no additional questions at this time. Our public hearing is open. We've got requests to speak for a public hearing from Melissa Brown.
I want y'all to mark this on your calendar, I'm going to tell you publicly that I agree with Mr. Purser on something. He is correct in the fact that there is a future request P&amp;Z just tabled to bring even more density to this exact area from a different developer. This is an area that has seen its share of flooding, and the more development, the more downstream flooding there is from here. And I do know that a couple of the council members came out and witnessed this downstream from this earlier. The bigger thing here is, why was there even a discussion when you have the experts that you trust? You just approved $165,000 salary for a new executive director of development services. Then again, you like to tell us that you should follow the planning and zoning board that you appointed. So who do you trust? Whose recommendation do you take? As a side note, our city manager shouldn't be having conversations about limiting discussions. This is not his meeting, his meeting is tomorrow. The council has always allowed individuals to discuss public hearing items during citizen comments. Your current structure makes that the only way for citizens to speak with you more than once on a public hearing. The only way. So if you vote yes on this, you are essentially saying that you want Turkey Trot to be a densely populated area with R1s, R2s, and townhomes. That's what you've decided to make it. You're wiping out that rural area, you're potentially causing more properties to be flooded out, because they only have to maintain the current standards, the way that the current flow of the water is. If you've gone out and you've looked at the current flow of the water, you know that even keeping that current flow isn't going to be helpful, you know that a detention pond is still going to overflow, and that water is going to go someplace. I want you to remember that. If you vote no on this, then I would hope you vote no on the higher-density projects when it comes to you. There has to be some sort of rhyme or reason, though, there has to become some sort of standard that this council has, other than, we like this person, we're going to approve it. This person gives us money for our campaigns, so we're going to approve 600 houses for them. This person doesn't give us money for our campaigns, we're not going to approve their request. Because that's the way it is from the public eye. That's the what we see, that's what the public sees, and perception is reality. So you either go along with what your staff, your experts, the people you tell us, we're wrong if we disagree with them, but I hear a lot of you about to disagree with your experts. Wouldn't that make you wrong? If we're wrong for disagreeing with them, that would make you even more wrong. So you either agree with your experts and you deny it, or you disagree with your experts and you let us all know that they are not the only experts, and that citizens who come up, oh, I'm so sorry that I'm boring you, Mr. Boyd, that citizens who come up with their comments that are in disagreement with the staff, that that doesn't make us ignorant or tells us that we don't know what we're talking about, and that there's more than one way to look at something, and just because they're paid staff doesn't make them the only experts or the ultimate say-so. You decide which way it is.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Welcome, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Councilmembers, thank you for your time. I'm not going to point fingers or throw accusations around, I'm speaking from experience. I live at 6909 Shannon Circle, which is across Stagecoach from Judge Cook's property, or what was formerly Judge Cook's property. It's not directly adjacent to what Mr. Purser is addressing today, but there are some issues that I have concerns over. Traffic is pretty bad in that area, especially in the mornings and stuff like that. I myself have called the city police multiple times for people speeding in the school zones, especially in the morning and the evening when the buses are running. I've stopped one officer and thanked him just for stopping a car that was speeding in the school zone. Even though we have a sidewalk, if a car drops a curb, a kid gets hit, we've got problems. So the traffic, there was an incident a couple of weeks ago at one of the schools over towards Bunny Trail, and the reunification area was Manah Church, which is directly behind my property, or to the east of my property. Several years ago, Mr. Lightfire wanted to put 100 and something units on that property, and with my neighbors, we were able to say, no, we don't want that. We said we would not object to them building on a half-acre lot, but everything out there is one acre, and most of it is single-family. Two-family residences on the other side of Tremere, it's not in the area that we're in. We really don't want R2, we don't want RT1. We don't object to R1 with a half-acre lot or more. We object to anything less than that. We feel that would devalue our property. When that reunification thing took place a week ago, the traffic down Stagecoach and WS Young was terrible. I needed to get to the planning and zoning meeting, and the officer said, you need to turn around and go the other way, and take the long way to get there. So that's what I did. But there are some concerns. The other concerns are infrastructure. I've lived at that residence for 25 years. The school was put in up above, and when Tremere Road was straightened out many years ago, before you and I lived here, they put a big three-foot drain underneath the road. Well, when we get a heavy rain, that water exceeds their catch pond and runs through that drain through a downhill property that's south of mine, and comes right down on me. I catch all of it, me and my neighbor. I've had the county engineers out there when it was counting, I've had the city engineers out there after we were annexed, they've all looked at it, and said they would address it, or look and see if they could address it, see nothing change. I get all the water every time we get a heavy rain. The church hauled in, we stopped counting, at 84 semis of dirt to raise the elevation of that property adjacent to me. I don't know if Mr. Purser's going to have a summer issue, but he's downhill from where I live, so there could be drainage issues and stuff. Anytime they elevate what's around me, I'm in the low spot, so I catch it all. So the drainage issues, the infrastructure issues, the sewage lines, you're going to have to rip up roads and stuff like that to handle the sewage and the water runoff and stuff like that. So these are just things I would like you to consider and think about. I object to the density that's being proposed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Price.
My question is kind of basic here. The mayor has stated that every neighborhood or every development is now an HOA in Colleen. So is this small development going to be an HOA? And I think you already answered the question about the eight-foot concrete walls that got to be around the entire area, but that's just major arteries. But if we're going to develop all these other things, it's going to be HOA, and they're going to have to put the big concrete walls along Tremere and Stanchley Louvre for this other development that's abutting this one. So I'm just kind of wondering how that's going to look out there in that rural area that we're going to put these eight-foot concrete walls that are now required by the city, as well as HOA? And with all this development of HOA property, how is it that the city council has, I know that there's a process by which the city council, the developer, the HOA, and then the city council has enforcement rights for HOAs? And if I'm not correcting, if it could be corrected, that's my own misunderstanding, I'm trying to understand HOAs. You know, I view them as a fascist kind of government setup, and I don't like that. So I believe in America free, you know? So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Good evening.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Rick McLean, I have two pieces of property on Stagecoach, 1948, 1982. Just history, when I moved here, after I retired in 92, the property I bought was Route 1, Box 245. So we've had several changes. Recently, I had a medical problem, and my wife had a stroke, so I've had to retire. So I'm home all the time, and I get to look across my property, Stagecoach Road, and I can see the traffic going, a lot of it. I know I can't fight change, but I would hate to have everything change quickly over there, to become crowded. I'm not sure how we're going to have streets, how the people that live over there are going to get in and out, because Turkey Trot, where it gets onto Stagecoach, there was a bend in the road because of the previous owner, and there's a curve there, and people come through there, and I'm constantly hearing horns blowing for people that hadn't stopped. If you come down Turkey Trot certain times of the day, you can wait a while to make that turn. There's going to be issues with that, and I just think we're going to put a whole lot more traffic on that stretch of road. And I'm not comfortable with that. Made my living on the highway, so I didn't get to see this town growing up effaced. Now that I'm here looking at it all the time, it's biting me right in the park. Just wanted to register my complaint about anything smaller than R1 across the street from me? Anybody have any questions for me?
Not at this time, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Welcome in.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Board members. Obviously, I'm going to be talking in protest against the rezoning of the R2. I like everybody else in that donut hole, I live off of Stagecoach right next to the church as well. Those of you who've been around a while know what donut hole is. We caused y'all some grief about 20 years ago. We don't need duplexes in that area, especially rental duplexes in that area. My biggest concern with higher-density housing in that urban area, our smallest lot being .9 acres, and it's the lot directly abutting that, that house that's in the pictures that you have, is crime. The more densely you put housing in there, the more crime you get. And as much as the police department is doing the best they can, they are struggling with what they've got already. We put more in there at this point, and we're just going to be adding to their difficulties without adding to their resources. As of last Monday, when I pulled the calls, there were over 170 calls that had to wait two hours or more for somebody to respond to it, because we just don't have the resources. And we're looking at packing in, on this first one, 22 more houses, and I haven't seen the plot, but from what I gather, there's more duplexes to come. That's just going to bring more crime to that area. Also against the B3, but that's a different plat, so we'll talk about that at a later The streets are, again, Turkey Trot is very narrow. It is not going to accommodate an entire neighborhood trying to leave in the morning to go to work, trying to leave in the morning to go to school, coming back from work, coming back from school. And if it gets backed up, and there's an emergency there, there's not another route that FD or police can take that's not going to take them four or five more minutes to get there. So some of the concerns that my compatriots are going to have with land use, I have those as well, but I'm really concerned about safety, nature of my job, that's just my nature to be concerned about safety. And then the last thing that I really want to say is that you guys have a policy here of having to sign up before the meeting, before you can speak. And I just want to note that Mr. Purser did not sign up to speak on public hearing until well after the meeting started, so just wanted to put that in there. Thank you. Oh, also, since I have a minute left, he's also not a citizen of the city of Colleen as well. He owns property in the city of Colleen, but he doesn't live in the city of Colleen. So by allowing the R2, you're telling the citizens of Colleen that citizens of another city have more sway over you than citizens of Colleen do.
We appreciate your statement. Mr. Kegel, can I turn that over to you?
The citizen comments on agenda items, we do ask that you sign up before the meeting, but on public hearings, you can sign up just before the public hearing starts.
Thank you. Mr. Joaquin Vegas.
Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members, thank you for hearing me. I signed up late, and I had to ask a couple of officers. Again, Joaquin Vegas, I live on 720 Turkey Trot, so I will be greatly affected by what goes on, on those two areas. I want to start off by saying I do like Colleen, I love Colleen. I've been here since 1988, and I've seen this city grow. The EMS, the police force, and the fire department do an excellent job. This guy right here, Officer Moore, I think his name is, with his homeless programs, he does well. I've seen him in action, and he speaks well to the people that have problems doing it, and the actual homeless people, so I just want to give him recognition. I feel a certain way when people say to me, well, you're in Colleen, blah, 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 or, well, it's Fort Hood, what do you expect from Fort Hood? Y'all know as well as I know that this city has a lot of people that aren't from Colleen. They're from all over the nation, and they come here because it's a great place, it really is. I do oppose any rezoning on Turkey Trot. Back to what the lady just left, traffic, traffic is horrendous. When I come out of my driveway, I'm driving two to three miles an hour. When somebody comes from Stagecoach to where I live, they're already topped out at 40, 45. I drive big trucks, so I'll be going slow, just because I can't drive that fast. And I just basically wanted to tell you that I oppose any rezoning on Turkey Trot. The gentleman just stated he had 54 duplexes, so why do we need another 22? And then additional, because he said they're going to build in that little area right there. Infrastructure, something that the city needs, is what needs to be built in that little triangle. I don't know what needs to be built, but I do know that more houses don't need to be built right there. That's all I had to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Vegas. Thank you, Mr. Vegas. Mr. Purser, Gary Purser.
Thank you. I've heard several discussions. That's healthy, not a problem. It needs to happen. The roads, we hear that all the time. We've got Tremere Road over there that's a five-lane road. We've got Stagecoach that's a five-lane road. Turkey Trot is an old, probably county road, but I don't know that, but I'm assuming it was probably a county road. To rebuttal some of this stuff that we talked, this young lady come up here and said, "I don't live in Colleen." I can tell you right now, I've lived in Colleen for 67 years, and that's probably more than anybody in this audience. I was born on ranch here, and I've lived here in that property and around in Colleen for 60-something years. Colleen's my home. I don't live there right now because of some circumstances that arose. Otherwise, I'd still be living here, but I don't. So that's neither here nor there. I heard, I think Ms. Brown, address some water issues. I lived on this property for 30 years. I know the water issues. I've seen them, right? I've seen the six-inch rains. I've seen it come across Turkey Trot. I can tell you how wide it comes across Turkey Trot, and it comes across pretty wide. But that's the engineers will take care of that. That's even not a non-issue. When we submit plans, construction plans, the engineers have to handle, we call it predeveloped and post-developed water. So right now, it's raw land. It's predeveloped. I can release that same amount of water, but I can't release any more than what's there. That's post-developed. That comes with construction plans, and that comes through engineers that are licensed to the state of Texas. I hear the infrastructure about the sewer, and let me give y'all a little history on the sewer. The city came to us, my family, me, father, whoever, y'all have an interceptor line that comes through my property that goes up there and serves the school. Y'all had to have an easement through my property. I didn't charge nothing. I asked for nothing. Now, it's a problem for me now when I develop, because I'm going to have to spend some money to do some things to it. But y'all came to me because y'all had to have security. Y'all could condemn it, eminent domain, y'all could have done all that. Cost you some money. I gave it to you, just like I gave 17-foot, damn near the whole length of Tremere Road, from the Boys Club to the south, gave it to you. Didn't charge you nothing. You know, this is my town. The gentleman said, "Why do I need more?" Well, I don't know. He's in the lawn business. I see it on his shirt. Why does he need more than one lawnmower? Why does he need this? Why does he need that? I guess because he's growing his business. But I don't have a problem with discussion. I don't. It's healthy for all of us. And they've been out there, I was out there before most any of them out there, and the city grew to it, and there's nothing else to it. We just have grown to that area. And I don't have a high density. I mean, my lots are, I don't even know, I better not say because they're planted, but I don't know. But they're not little bitty lots, and Mr. Cruthers will build the houses, and he builds a very nice house. So, you know, I just ask that y'all look at things. I follow all your rules. I follow everything. Y'all spent hundreds of thousands of dollars with consultants. They give you a program or a map to go by. I follow in primary use. I meet all your criteria, your 20-40 comprehensive plan, and...
Thank you, Mr. Purser.
That's all I get. Thank you all.
That concludes our citizen's comments of public hearing. If you can come on up to the podium, sir. Let me see. Are you Mr. Brian Rutz?
Yes, I'm Brad Rutz.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, velocity and whatnot.
Thank you.
I do want to first start saying thank you, guys. Apology to you all that you inherited this problem that past council members put down to you guys. We are part of the donut hole. We were there for several years. Council wanted to take it over. We told them no. And part of our contingency plans of allowing y'all to take us over in Anexin was we wanted to keep that area R1 agricultural and non-dense housing area. If you look at the old future use land map, what we have out there is what was recommended and was recommended to stay that way. Council said that they would keep it that way for years and years. Of course, we have expired out of that. Y'all have come to a new future use land map, and it does allow a lot more things. You know, now townhouses, now this more dense area, it's kind of a free-for-all is really what it is compared to what we, the restrictions we did have out there before. Yes, if you look at this area, this has been developed a long time ago, 50-something years old. These houses are still standing out there. These were not cheaply built houses. If they were, it was cheap to build those houses at that time. People moved out there because they wanted the future of being in an area that wasn't congested inside the city. We've got the congestion problems that we have in the city now as we had then. People wanted to get out in the rural area. This was a nice rural area. They developed nice acre lot land because that was the requirements that they could do with septic and so forth out there and managed for several years. So coming out here to now, because he has moved and he's wanting to sell everything to put townhouses or R2 housing in here, after he's already come to you guys once, came to planning and zoning once also, and said, "Hey, I want R1," and you guys had the debate. At that time, he could have pulled it and said, "No, let's go ahead and pull it. I'm going to come back and I'm going to do R2." He's back here now wanting to do R2 when you've already granted him R1, okay? There's a lot of problems out there. You've heard some of these people saying, "I'm glad we had a lot of people come out here," because if you do, if you look at how many people you actually surveyed, a lot of those people are not in town, and a lot of them, the cattle that he has on his ranch area. So they're not going to come unopposed. They don't even know the better. But protect our area that we have out there, you know? Couple months later, you're fixing to see old Cook's Land. It's going to come to you again. He's the one who put townhouses out there. So we're now adding more on top of what Mr. Purser's going in. He got the first step. Turkey Trot is going to be your next problem with all the traffic. That is your chaperone, fixing to happen again, okay? That was supposed to be developed in the agreement. Those roads were supposed, that infrastructure was supposed to be taken care of. Y'all skipped by, y'all got done with the bare basics. That's where we're at. It is a flood area, okay? If you don't look at it, you know, deny it for its density, just deny it because it's a flood area, you're killing wildlife area, killing wetland area, you're adding to more traffic, you're adding to more problems for the fire department, for your police department that they can't handle already, you know? It's just, I don't see any value out of this going to R2. Develop a single-family housing out there, that's fine. We'll be happy with that. Don't put dense housing out here that's not needed. Persever and protect what you have in the areas that you have. We don't need the townhouses. They're not even developing down the road for us like that. So I would deny this like everybody else says. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutz. I did verify, that appears to be our last comment for public hearing. Public hearing is closed. We do have a couple of statements from council members. We're going to start with Councilmember Adams.
I have a couple of questions. I think I may need Mr. Reynolds or Mr. the city engineer. But not to put the chief on the spot, but either one of you. Questions came up about your ability to respond. If this area was built out, what help or would there be an issue? It's not, it's not...
Mayor Pro Tem? I apologize. Lost a quorum. Our quorum is broken.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We're going to call a five-minute break, just five minutes. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to resume our meeting. Thank you. We're going to resume our meeting, and we've got some council members who have some questions. We're going to pick that back up with Councilmember... Can I have everyone's attention, please? Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, just make sure my time goes back to three minutes. It's at 2:30. First question for the chief, comments made about the ability to respond, what effect does this development have on any of your capabilities?
Well, without having the numbers of population, we got to base on assessments on three models. It's either the FBI or the Texas workforce model, which states, staffing model, which states that you need 2.2 officers per 1,000 population, or 2.4 per the FBI, or we could do a calls for service analysis or workload analysis. So without having the number of people that we anticipate being in that subdivision and that development, safe guess, if it's 1,000 people, 2.2.
Okay. So it wouldn't, this doesn't sound like with the, this wouldn't negative, well, it's going to add work, but would this negatively affect your ability to perform your duties?
Well, I have to do an assessment first to see how many people are going to be there.
Same question, Chief Conves.
Good afternoon. Yes, so the statistics show anywhere from 12,000 to 15,000 population per fire station. We are well below that already, and we do as much as we can. And to be totally honest, the higher density means more population, which causes a strain on that lower density. We get less calls in single-family residents' neighborhoods than we do in multifamily, and that's just a statistic. So again, we'd have to do an analysis to see what that impact would be, and over time, try to acquire the necessary resources to be able to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Zekla, this question is really, I know that there's already a pond on the property. Does this zoning, both the one already approved and if this one is approved, require another additional retention pond, or does any other adjustments need to be made?
So that'll actually come when they do the engineering design. They will be required to do detention in some way, whether they can utilize the existing pond or if they have to, that's really going to be part of their design, how it grades out, how they're tying into it. But I mean, detention is going to be a requirement for them.
Okay. And then not to belabor it with irrigation and water flow, I know that that area flows into the Tremere Basin or part of the Tremere Basin?
I believe that is the Tremere Basin that kind of works its way to the northeast out of Briar Croft, and then it makes its way to the east.
Okay. So they will have to require, and I think Mr. Purser mentioned, they will have to make sure that they at least, there's a standard change to where when you build on it, you go above what the predevelopment is?
We don't have any requirements there. We may right now, depending on whatever basin, we don't have any requirements or restrictions on any of the basins in the city at this time. So right now, they just have to meet that predeveloped.
Okay. And then the last one is, I know Turkey Trot is a rural road, so that road needs to be adjusted.
So it is what we consider that residential collector. It is a residential street, not an arterial. So what we would be requiring the developer is meeting our standards, whether it's a 60-foot right-of-way in this case, and if we don't have it, and I think it's only 50, we would be requiring that dedication from the developers anywhere along that strip. Plus, they will be required to do sidewalks and any improvements along the edge, so a little bit of frontage improvements.
Okay, and that sidewalk include drainage?
And they'll be looking at drainage and all that stuff, yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember, it was the city manager, Mr. Kegel.
Sure, I would just like to respond to some of the comments. I'm not trying to sway anybody one way or another, but I'm not going to presume to know what Mr. Purser thinks, but I know what I think and that this recommendation was not personal. You can tell from the comments here tonight, this is a messy area. It's difficult, and we did the best that we could with our recommendation. The flume is at a 20,000-foot level, and yes, there's a number of things that say can go in here, but as you drill down, you get more specific, and that's where we came up with our recommendation. And I would think that just because a property was developed outside the city and then annexed, they don't lose any rights. They still have the ability to have their opinion, and when we were making these recommendations, we tried to take all of this into account. And to say that the property to the south is treated differently, well, everything's treated a little bit different because it's a different situation. It is a mix. It's already got some commercial, and we recommended a small amount of townhomes to buffer the commercial from the single family. That's how we arrived at those recommendations, not favoring one developer over another, but trying to take the entirety of the whole area into account and do the best that we could. And I think it can be possible to have disagreements between P&amp;Z, staff, council, residents. It happens all the time. We are not group think. And so I just wanted to make those statements to defend staff, and I think we have a good recommendation, but there's other things that obviously that could go there. But I just wanted you to know the rationale for our decision. And then as far as citizen comments on the agenda items, when you pick up your agenda from right over there under citizen comments, it says, "This section allows members of the public to address the council regarding any items other than a public hearing item." This comes straight out of your governing standards. Now, I know in the past, we've had some slip-ups. Some people have spoken for eight minutes. Mayor and I discussed this. We talked about the governing standards and talked about enforcing it, making sure we do the right thing by everyone in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you. Always tough, you know? You hear one side of it, and it's like, you know, that makes sense. You hear the other side, it's, that makes sense too, and then we got to make a decision. But overall, when people come up here and speak, especially for zoning residential, it's always kind of, we hear them all, and for us, you know, I understand for a lot of people, it's like for them, they live there. And so a lot of times, you see a lot of commonality for as far as the objections, you know, traffic is always, no matter where you go, it's always going to be the big thing that people say, you know, there's going to be a lot of traffic, more crime, more public safety. That's all part of a city growing, you know? And I always say, as elected leaders, what is the biggest challenge? I get asked that a lot. What is the biggest challenge that you have? And it's always trying to keep up with growth, and we know that. We know that growth is a big challenge. But in hearing everything, the only concern that I saw, you know, listening to all the facts and everything, is the possible flooding, you know? And so if we can address that a little bit more and kind of reassure people that it's not going to flood like it is, then I'm okay with that. You know, we got engineers that do that to make sure. I was out there, I was one of the ones out there walking a different area over there. But when you build, can you correct this for me too, somebody that knows this stuff? When you build bigger lots, because that's kind of the question, versus smaller lots, which ones have a bigger chance of water draining out? Is it a bigger lot or is it smaller lots? You know, which ones are you going to have less trouble with flooding?
So when you design... Doesn't really depend whether it's a large lot or small lot. You're looking at the amount of impervious area, roof area, hardscape, and then that's what you use to design any detention pond. So you're going to, what's out there today is grass. It's all considered, you know, pervious material, and the times are all different because of grasses. So as you develop, you take all that into account, and that's that post-develop, and then you want to make sure you use detention ponds that hold back the water so you're not doing any flooding downstream. You're kind of using those flows, matching those flows, so you can keep them low.
So when you guys look at and all that, do you see any flooding issues? Are there going to be any major issues with flooding?
That's what the design's supposed to take into That's, that's what the design's supposed to take into account. They're supposed to analyze that and no matter what, a development comes in, they cannot make anything worse. If there's ways that we can slow down and improve it, we can do that. But at the very least, a developer cannot make anything worse.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. One thing that we as a council are responsible for doing is balance growth and keeping up with growth. I just want to first acknowledge the citizens that came out to speak who live in the area and have witnessed the, the transition and changes. I also want to, to highlight the absolute fact that, you know, the city is, the city is growing and things are changing. It's like growing out of a T-shirt. You just can't wear that T-shirt no more as you get, you get older. You know, things change. The developer or owner of the land, anywhere in the city, has a right to develop their land. That's their right. Whether they own a small piece of land or multiple tracts of acreage, you know, as citizens, you know, we reserve that right. The cop plan argument was, was interesting as I was listening to it and looking at this document. I, I'll say, for the most part, I see where this document is in alignment. That's my, my personal perspective on that, without getting too deep into it. This section appears to be a pocket, excuse me, of two family homes. It reminds me of the Lineage Loop development that's located just off of Bunny Trail. I used to live over there off of Lineage Loop. Higher end duplexes and we didn't have a lot of issues over there. Most of us are familiar with the product that Purser builds and most of the time, it's a high-quality product. And I would believe it would be the same over there. And so that's my perspective there. So I'm not going to belabor the point. And as someone who has not received a campaign contribution from Mr. Purser, I'm going to make a motion to approve, surprise, surprise, PH-25-010. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor to approve this public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second. Second. It's not working.
We have a second by council member Sagara. We're going to take a vote. All in favor, vote yes. Any opposed, vote no. Looks like all have voted in support of public hearing 25-010. At this time, we're going to adjourn this meeting and go into closed session. The time now is 5:03. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act law, VTCA government code 55.1.001, the mayor Protem now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the 18th day of March 2025 at again, 5:03 PM, under the following authority. Section 55.074 Personnel Matters. The city council will... Let's maintain order in the chamber, please. The city council will conduct a city manager quarterly review. Public discussion of this matter would not be in the best interest Ladies and gentlemen, council has completed its closed meeting on March 18th, 2025 at 6:20 PM. I need to call the meeting back to order. I'm going to call this meeting back to order at 6:21 PM.
Madam Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I move to adjourn.
We've got a motion to adjourn and a second by council member Solomon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a wonderful evening.